Good evening. Calling to order the February 15th meeting of the Newton School Committee to interview finalist candidate Dr. Anna Nolan. Welcome to the members of the public who are in person with us for the interview. I'm going to ask that members of the public silence your cell phones, refrain from any outbursts, disruptions, or even applause, and maintain order throughout our interview. Thank you. So, Dr. Nolan is currently the superintendent of the Natick Public Schools. She is a self-described lifelong educator and has worked in the field of education for over 25 years, with the last five as superintendent. Welcome, Dr. Nolan. We are very grateful for your interest in our district, and we thank you for spending an entire day here in Newton, meeting with our faculty and staff, touring several of our amazing schools, enjoying a luncheon with myself and the mayor, participating in a community forum, and now interviewing before the school committee at the end of that full day to become Newton's next superintendent and the leader of the Newton Public Schools. So, thank you and welcome. The first part of your interview will be a presentation of your 90-day entry plan based on what you've learned about the strengths, challenges, and opportunities of the Newton School District. You will have up to 20 minutes for your presentation. By previous agreement, questions on your presentation will occur during the final part of our interview tonight. Dr. Nolan, the floor is yours, and you may begin.
Just going to share my screen as I've been guided to do. Good evening and thank you. I just want you to know this is a little bit of a different type of entry process that you've asked me to undertake. Typically, these are two types of documents, one that stands alone for your deep-dive perusal as committee members, and then what I would present to the community. So this is an amalgam of that. So I just want to say all that this additional text is not my usual presentation style, but I needed it to do two things with you. So with that, I wanted to just begin. The Newton Public Schools has many strengths that exist already, and the job of a new superintendent is to write the next chapter for the story that is the Newton Public Schools. And that's not a solo process. In fact, it's an entry planning process that mandates collaboration and communication with the community and all the constituents and with you as a governance board. I'm not sure if this is being reflected as a shared. So there's an interactive portion to the last portion of my PowerPoint. So I don't know if we'll be able to do that, but I wanted you to know the tools that I typically use for community engagement. So as I was saying, an entry plan is a collaborative process, and it has specific goals to gather information and to establish relationships and to unearth what the requirements are for the next phase of the school system. So while I know many things about Newton, it does require a listening tour that happens for those 90-day period, and then I bring those findings to you as the governance board, and we make sense of what we have heard together. And that's why we entry plan. I wanted to give you this list that I will not present in detail of how you will know I have been successful at the end of that entry plan. There are deliverables that you can expect from me in that 90-day time period that I've listed in the blue sidebar, which will include our own norms and operating routines of how you would like to be updated on information that I'm finding, which stakeholders I'm meeting with on a regular basis. I would intend to run what are called Thought Exchanges, which I will share with you what that is at the end of the presentation. And I think you'll find that type of collaborative community information helpful to your processes as a governance board. Also, if we open school in an orderly fashion next fall, and you've had a smooth transition, that would be a deliverable I would hope to bring to you while I'm still learning all the things that are the Newton Public Schools. I would expect to meet 90 people in 90 days at a minimum, but also interact with lots of stakeholder groups. And you would expect from the administrative team and me some sort of template for the types of data that you would like to see us tracking on over time within the community. What that requires is for us to, for me to be interacting with clergy groups and community groups and governance team, the fire department, the police department, any safety officials, these types of stakeholders, and of course, the mayor, so that we can understand how our partnership will begin and what the key issues are from a variety of stakeholders. That would be all before school begins. An entry planning process is also a chance, though, for you to see if your mission and my career mission are in alignment. I share that with you here because we'll be testing that until we co-broker a vision and mission together as a community. We are operating under your previous mission statement, and I'm operating under my core values as a professional. They're listed here for your understanding. In terms of core values, we share many of them. I used my artificial intelligence technology to take your vision and mission and core values and to create a themed piece of art from that. And I took my application materials to let you know what is at the center. If you've seen these before, the words that are larger are repeated more often in the materials, just a symbolic representation of our juxtaposition right now. In terms of core values, I looked to your existing documents to say, what does this community currently value? What is the foundation upon which the next chapter will be written? And I shared my own core values with you of how I've approached our craft, the craft of being an educator and a leader. And that includes, as I hope you've heard in my responses today, high standards and high support, which equals high respect for all parties involved in the school community. That includes staff and students and families. To be a pioneer in our craft and the outcomes, the best methods, the most current technology, and socializing that with our expert teachers so we know how to use those in service to our young people. And that service to young people is about personalized learning for all. That means that every child gets what they need when they need it to choose the future they want. And that means something different for many students, but the process to support our educators so they find that for every student is what professional administrators should be doing. And doing all of that with an ethic of community care and collaboration and trust building, which of course I'll be new and I'll have to build those muscles over time with the community, but that is generally how I operate. You have to trust our schools with your children, and we have to talk to you often and talk to you about how we care for your children. And those are my core values. Entry planning for me has four phases. The first is a listening, learning, and building relationships phase. And that's about gathering critical information and coming in as an open and curious thinker, not coming in with presupposed ideas or resting on one viewpoint or another, but trying to seek as many stakeholder opinions as possible about where we currently are. The second phase is then taking documents and data that currently exist and squaring it with what I'm hearing in those listening sessions. I would say to you that those two sections are the first 90 days. Then with the themes that have emerged, I have to check back with all the constituencies that I met with in the summertime and with you and with the staff and the administration in summer retreats to find out, is this really the right, do I have it right? Have I heard, are the patterns the ones that are resonating for you? And just checking back, checking back with the students that we interview, checking back with families and community members. And then as we emerge through the year, we'll need to decide how we would like to undertake strategic planning for the future. And there's many ways to do that. But what is the long-range plan for this organization that takes us to the place where Newton wants to be next? So I would assume that by June of that first year that we would be together, we would be deciding how to strategic plan for the longer term. But the most important component of the 90-day listening is to build trust and understanding and to do the work with your professional administrators and teachers while I'm learning and listening. So learning the work and asking the questions and reflecting that back as we think about the long-term goals of the organization. I hope this is a useful timeline to you of 90 days of who I think I would be meeting with and what we would be doing together. I would be attending events, and we would be looking at the operating budget and grant funding structures. We would be looking at your achievement data and analyzing that. We'd be meeting with you as a governance team, and we would be in retreat deciding our norms for operating and the goals that you have heard are necessary as you've all become elected community officials. I would be meeting with the mayor in her office and understanding the pressures and the opportunities that she saw for the schools and the government team to do together. Of course, a huge priority would be understanding the work of the administrative team and learning our beat, how do we interact with each other? What are the deliverables that this organization expects from its superintendent and desires from its superintendent? And you would hear back from me on initial findings in October, which would guide me with further feedback about our next steps. I shared with you three sections of the types of questions that I might ask. Of course, I would want to speak with you and the administrative team about if these are the questions that are resonating, but my gut tells me these are the ones from the questions that I've heard you ask me and that what we typically do in entry planning. Some core values questions, questions specifically for our Newton educator colleagues and what's their experience like so I can understand that from the Newton Public School staffer perspective. And then questions for students about their experience and what they might be needing and desiring. And we had a fabulous time with your, I had a fabulous time with your students today, and your high school students are extremely articulate about their worries and their hopes for the schools in the future. And finally, a set of questions for families and community stakeholders so that we can understand what the family experience of the Newton Public Schools is and what their hopes and dreams are for their young people. But again, building trust is the main component of the 90-day entry plan experience. And I do want to say that building that trust and interacting and doing community stakeholder engagement has changed dramatically in my mind from the pre-pandemic time period until now. It's not enough to survey. It's not enough to offer meetings where people don't attend. It's not enough to hear only the voices that show up at certain meetings and know to do that and are empowered to do so. You have a diverse student body and community, and it will require different types of stakeholder engagement. And it doesn't appear that we're going to be able to do this interactive piece, but if you'd like to stick around at the end, we can practice it together. But I have been involved with a company called Thought Exchange just as an advisor for many years. And I do think that it helps us to understand more viewpoints within our community. So we've used this in a variety of ways in my current role to determine how community partners would discuss with each other ideas in a community, not just the loudest voices or the people who knew to fill out the survey or took the time to come to the meeting, but you can canvas community groups at a much deeper level and have them react to each other's commentary. And then it actually tracks, and this is what I can't show you, it tracks who are your biggest connectors in your stakeholder process. So who put the ideas into this survey that the most people connected to? Not the loudest or not the greatest number of votes on something, but people whose ideas compelled others to respond. And in doing so, the analytics of this tool themes your major needs and discussions and also says where your major disagreements might lie in your community. Those are the places we might hold community conversations to probe deeper, go to neighborhoods, and then it just focuses our engagement efforts differently. This is just one type of engagement strategy I would suggest that we participate in, and those questions can be designed collaboratively by many teams. In addition, we've become expert at different types of virtual meetings and multi-channel streams. We've had great success with Community Stream Yards, where administrators interact with the public and answer questions in a really personal way, and that those are broadcast on many different channels in many different languages so that lots of stakeholders can participate. So I share those simply because we've had feedback that Zoom meetings are not the end-all-be-all of how we engage with people, and we really try to meet people where they are, so on LinkedIn or Facebook Live or those types of processes that allow us to really get to the people who are attending our schools. So I would look forward to that. That would certainly influence the entry planning process. And that concludes an overview of my 90-day process. I do have examples of prior entry plans and executive summaries should you desire to look at those.
Thank you, Dr. Nolan. We appreciate the very comprehensive entry plan. It's very thoughtfully done. And as I mentioned earlier, we will entertain questions on the entry plan in the third part of your interview tonight. So if you have a question, please jot it down so you don't forget it. The next part of our interview will consist of school committee members engaging in conversation with you around specific topics that are important to our group. And these topics were drafted during our question development meeting that we had together last week. Each school committee member will pose one question in this round. This section is scheduled for one hour, and you will have up to six minutes, God bless you, six minutes to respond to each question. We will start with a question from Kathy Shields, the member from Ward 7 and vice chair of the school committee.
Good evening, Dr. Nolan. So my question is, how would you describe your management philosophy or style? And what are your managerial strengths and weaknesses?
So my managerial style, I would say, is distributed leadership style. I have a mentoring dominant style where we define roles and responsibilities within our zone, but then set goals and stretch goals where administrators or teachers or whoever is under my management have that just-right next step where they want to move to. I also find that if you allow people to understand their roles, but you challenge them to take on responsibilities that are under the mission and vision that you have set together as an organization, you generally get more out of individuals and you build more trust. So everyone's taking forward the organization. So I would say I have a pretty distributed style. My leadership team would probably say it feels more flat, especially at the central office level. Lots of cross-training and intertwining of skill building. It's also my greatest joy to meet with our staff and find out what excites them and what their passions are and find the places where they can shine within the organization. It doesn't, I don't always have to be the front person to the initiative. In fact, sometimes I'm at my best when I'm pushing from behind or supporting people and getting resources so that they can take the next step. The second part of your question, Ms. Shields, again, please.
Sort of related to the first part, but what are your managerial strengths and weaknesses?
So in terms of strengths, I think that I provide and create an environment where people feel psychologically safe to take risks. We do a lot of talking about how we mess up well and we succeed well. We do autopsies on things if they haven't gone well, and we try to determine how to learn from things. So I think we create a safe environment. I think a weakness for me is that I am exuberant about just about anything. So I have to really bind my own case in terms of not distributing myself too widely. So I have a really good team that calls me on that. I also try to keep a team of rivals around me. I don't, I don't want a bunch of mini-me's in my advisorship area. I think we're better when we have a lot of diverse opinions. So I enjoy that kind of environment. What that does come with, though, is a very strong capacity to say whose decision it is to make a decision and to be really clear about when it isn't a decision that is collaboratively made. So we just have really honest talks about that, and people ask questions, and we meet regularly.
Thank you, Dr. Nolan. Thanks, Kathy. The next question is from Cove Davis. She's the member from Ward 8.
What has been the most unpopular professional decision you have had to make? And how did you handle the reaction to this decision?
Oh, I love talking about this over and over. So I had to close an elementary school, make a decision to close an elementary school. Well, I didn't make that decision alone. The school committee made that decision. But this elementary school is under 200 students. And for the past 20 years, three superintendents have tried to close this particular elementary school. And it's a very difficult building to keep up. It's not ADA accessible. It doesn't move or change with enrollment trends. It is the size it is, and we cannot fit any more students there. Therefore, there can be no special education, specialized programs there, and we cannot fit the classrooms that we need for a learning center or English language learner supports there. So that means anyone in that neighborhood who needs those services is bused somewhere else. And that's different from every other school in our portfolio. Also, for the last two town administrators, the closing of that school is raised every time there is a budget crisis and used, I feel, as a pawn in a game where parents are up and down and worried about the closure of their school. And each year, we had a structural deficit of about $3.2 million. In a couple years, there was a purported deficit of $6 million. And to cut $6 million out of a $70 million budget was a huge hit for us. We did everything that we could to not close the school, including getting the teachers' union to take 0% COLA along with all our administrators to address some of that budget crisis. But $6 million is all the COLA and the building and extracurriculars, and it was a lot of things, and that didn't come to pass. But it did make me understand that I cannot continue to traumatize that school. And if we're going to constantly be in this budget cycle mode, we need to make a decision to balance the total budget to be kind to this group and give them a staggered release out of the school. But it still was a really, really hard decision that was polarizing and upsetting. And I wish I didn't have to make the decision, but it is the hardest one I've ever had to do.
Thanks, Kathy. Or I'm sorry, thanks, Cove. Up next, we have a question from Chris Bresky. He's the member from Ward 2. Go ahead, Chris.
Dr. Nolan, excuse me. Please describe the balance between an organization driven by ideals and an organization driven by outcomes. How do you create a strategic plan addressing this? And how do you evaluate its efficacy?
So I spoke a little bit about this today. So I hope you'll beg, you'll tolerate the repeat. So aspirational goals are important, and they sweep people up in a vision of what the future can be. And we need to do that. We need to say, what is the vision we want for the graduates of the Newton Public Schools? What do we want the schools to be in the community? What is the ideal way we want to interact with the community and all be swept up in support of our students? But we need to agree what the core values there are, and what we are saying are the measures of whether or not students are actually meeting that vision of our graduate. So that information needs to come out of the entry planning process and the strategic planning process about what we want to prioritize as a system. Once we do that, the administrative team and I can pull back and say, what are the ways that we could tell you that we are meeting those strategic outcomes? How could we show you that that is happening? You may have some opinions, I imagine, on what that could be as well. You are a critical part of the collaborative process as the governance team because you are out there in your wards understanding perspectives from different groups and stakeholder groups. And we are the professional educators that know the kinds of tools that might give you the understanding that you need of how we're doing. But that means that we have to report that to you on a regular basis. I feel so strongly about families needing to understand how we're tracking on success that we are in the process of designing a self-service parent portal where parents log in and see where their students are tracking against grade-level outcomes. They can see all kinds of stats about their students and where they are in the curriculum mastery process. So it would depend what the community wanted to see in terms of the strategic outcomes, but we would need to provide a way for you to regularly see that we were doing what we said we would do.
Thanks, Chris. Next, we have a question from Anping Shen. He's the school committee member from Ward 3.
Hi, Dr. Nolan. My question is, what is your vision to capitalize the increasingly diversified student population in our district? 56% white students, 21% Asian students, 10% Hispanic/Latino students, 5% African-American/Black students, and 8% multirace non-Hispanic students according to the Department of Education 2023 school profile. I apologize for these specific percentages. So to maintain the legacy of our district educational excellence.
So how would I capitalize on the diversity of the student body while maintaining excellence?
To, yeah.
Yes.
To capitalize the increasing diversified student population to maintain, enhance our district's educational excellence legacy. Thank you.
Sure. Well, I mean, many districts aspire to have the kind of diverse voices that you have in your student body and in your staff and in your community as a whole. For example, in the Natick Public Schools, I've been there 20 years. We had 5% students of color when I started. We're now at 27%. So we're a very different type of community. But we aspire to have the diversity of opinion, thought, and cultural, linguistic, ethnic backgrounds that you have in the Newton Public Schools because we think that that creates a stronger set of conditions for excellence. So teachers, when they are addressing that kind of diversity, have to be expert, have to be highly trained, have to not teach one size fits all and live the values I think we should all espouse when we're at our best for kids, which is to personalize education for every child. And what that means is connecting them, having them see themselves in their community schools, and their parents seeing and trusting those community schools with the understanding that we acknowledge their diversity and their culture and what they bring to the table. So there's that two-way understanding of what each brings to the table. I don't think that increasing diversity is at odds with excellence. I think it pushes excellence. It is the next, it is the way that the future is for our country. It is increasingly diverse, and the best systems will keep pace with that and be pioneers in how they address diversity through excellent teaching and high standards with high support. And that respectful environment builds the kind of excellence I think any school system and community would want.
Thanks, Anping. Up next, we have a question from the school committee member from Ward 6, Paul Levy. Go ahead, Paul. Oh, Paul, you're muted.
Oops.
Paul is joining us remotely.
Apologies for not being there in person. Here's my question. How would you go about helping the community reach a broadly shared and clearly articulated commitment towards both equity and excellence for Newton? Please provide examples from your previous positions where you were personally involved in helping a community work through these kinds of difficult issues. Thank you.
So we have had two mapping processes in recent years in our school system. One is when we mapped the stakeholder process for the profile of a Natick graduate, and the other was when we did the profile of a Natick educator. So the stakeholder process for defining those expectations for excellence, Mr. Levy, was everybody in the Natick Public Schools was invited to participate, every child, every parent, businesses, community members, staff. Everyone was invited to participate in the process by which we determined what the core values were for the profile of a graduate. That happened in multiple modalities, many sessions. Each school developed their own profile and then laid it up into a district profile that we had a lot of amazing debates about who we wanted to be as a system versus a system of schools. So that was a process that was really uplifting and also cohered all parts of the community to the vision. After that, we said, well, if we're going to operationalize this vision, we need to make sure we have staff who have the skill sets and the mindsets to do it. So it was actually in partnership with our teachers' union that we co-launched the profile of a Natick educator. We, the way we've negotiated over the last nine years of our contracts is we collaboratively bargain. We do not use traditional bargaining. So what that means is we need a shared set of values and, and a framework around which to, to situate our bargaining. So this was actually in COVID when we took on the, like, the very first few weeks of COVID. We took on the profile of a Natick educator. It was on our list to do. And, and our teacher union president was like, we care about this too, so let's do it. So all of the educators said, well, if this is the vision that we're pushing, what do we all need to know and be able to do as professional educators to support that vision? And so if you look at our materials, you'll see that, that vision there as well. That is galvanizing. It allows us to hire in a coordinated fashion. It allows us to train in a coordinated fashion. It allows us to exclude those individuals or those values that don't comply with what the community expects and to say, I'm sorry, that's not part of our vision. Of course, this allows us to budget in a very streamlined way. And, and I have appreciated the, the support from the teachers' union around that vision. We've also been able to bargain our contracts that way. So that if we're saying that we want certain types of professional qualities and someone doesn't have it, then we need to provide certain types of professional development within the schools for our staff so that everyone gets it. So, so those are just two examples of how we've, we've mapped that process.
Thanks, Paul. The next question is mine, and I, of course, am Timmy Kolchewski. I'm the member from Ward Four and the chair of the school committee. At the end of your first year, how would NPS faculty and staff describe the culture you have created?
Well, I would hope they would describe it as open, collaborative, and caring. And I hope they would understand that in, in one year, I may not have all my hands around all the cultural aspects. It's just, this is a big organization. It has a long history. That I will be of the culture, but I am not the culture. But it is my job to understand it and to understand how I can be a part of that next phase of it. I think that people will find that I've been a good listener and that I've modeled taking risks and making mistakes and communicating about that, taking risks and having success and communicating about that. They absolutely will find a person who is championing the good work that they are doing and celebrating the successes of the students. And also, in our, our retreat and reflection work, trying to push ever harder on the places that we aren't necessarily making the marks. I may not know all those marks yet, but within the strategic planning process, we're going to make some decisions about goals we want to hit. So we're going to have to take some deep reflection time periods to say, are we actually there? Are we doing what we said we, we were doing? So I, I think in a first year, I think that's a reasonable set of expectations that, that they would, that they would know about me and my way of conducting the business.
Up next, we have a question from Rajiv Parlikar. He's the school committee member from Ward One.
Dr. Nolan, having, having spent today meeting with the NPS team and Newton community, what aspects of the superintendent role do you find most exciting? And what aspects do you find most daunting?
So, well, most exciting is, is just what I love about being an administrator, that I can help educators who in turn lift up children to be whatever it is they want to be. School changed my life. I grew up in a very large family with not a lot of money and no vision for college for my sisters and me. I'm one of nine girls. I had a teacher that literally transformed the way I was able to interact with the world and changed my life trajectory. I think good administrators and teachers do that. And they remove barriers for every kid, and they, they listen and they work hard to make sure that that opportunity for school to help them realize their American dream, that it really happens. So that's the part I love the most, is taking away those barriers. And I, I am a teacher all the way, so I do geek out on the curriculum, and I love to get into that stuff. But you have, you have dedicated individuals who are there, but I can ask great questions about that. And I am excited about that work with what we put in the hands of children inspires them to be here and makes them excited and paints their future, what they may want to do when they grow up. I mean, the part that is the most challenging is, is weighing those aspirational ideas with the realities of how you have to run systems and the, the ups and downs of, of business. The ups and downs, I mean, a pandemic, who could have predicted that, right? And that you sometimes have to make choices that are the lesser of two evils in order to, to keep the school system as safe and healthy for the majority of students. So I hate having to make those trade-offs. I never want to trade off anything on, when it comes to kids. So I guess that, like theoretically, is the, is the hardest part. The position that you are in right now, contemplating budget cuts, that's also one of my least favorite times to be. Over the 20-year period I've been in Natick, at least 12 of those years, I have had to put out cut lists that never came to be. And that's a trauma to a committee, to a community. When you continuously put out those types of things and, and you have to rank order who's going to be bumped out by your union, and you have to, you have to threaten to cut extracurricular activities to get people to invest in something. Those are not good plays. Those are not good things for communities, and I've had to endure that. So I just, I share that as a, a most unpleasant part of the job.
Thank you, Rajiv. Up next, we have a question from Mayor Fuller.
Sorry about this transition. How will you deal with the financial challenges facing the Newton Public Schools?
I sincerely hope I don't have to put out a cut list. Well, you can tell from my previous example that I have the experience to manage some of those pieces. What I have found during budget cuts of the past is you just have to be really honest and direct about what it is. And we don't want to overpromise. We don't want to pretend that we have all the solutions. But in the background, I'd be doing everything that I possibly can to get the resources for the schools to mitigate any of those types of financial issues. I think you're trying to do what is right by having this override. That's what we do. We have to. Because Proposition Two and a half binds us in a different way, and so what choices do we have? So I would say to you that, uh, over the past three years, I've written $7 million of grants outside of the typical allocations that, that a school district gets, say, under Title One or Title Two or Title Three. I'll roll up my sleeves and try to find those creative aspects. I don't know what kind of community development campaigns you have done, but local businesses are really invested in schools. I see schools as an economic development engine. And lots of times, businesses have a lot to say about what they'd like to see from the graduates from the schools. And they'll also make investments. So are there synergies that we can put in place that might mitigate some of the financial damage that has been done? I don't, I don't know the answer to that, sitting here today. So those are the types of, of things that, that I would want to do. I'd want to turn over every stone before we were co-opting the student experience in the classroom in, in any way. But of course, I'd have to look for synergies and efficiencies and, and try to make those financial impacts as minimal as possible.
Thank you, Mayor Fuller. And up next, we have a question from school committee member Emily Prender. She's the member from Ward Five.
Hi. Please share with us examples of how you have implemented instructional strategies to improve educational outcomes for all children.
So when I was the assistant superintendent for curriculum, this was my whole job. That looked different depending on what we were implementing. So for many years, we've been implementing investigations in math. This is an example. And we, we needed a lot of professional development for our teachers so that they did not let off the rigor of the mathematics while they were scaffolding to meet the needs of diverse learners. To me, that's the whole enchilada, if you will, of how do you keep the high standards but high support? So that means a lot of training for teachers and making sure that A, they know the material and the math themselves. And B, they are consultative with the other experts adjunct to their classrooms, such as the English language learner teacher or the special educator. Teaching is not an isolation profession these days. And to that end, we have deeply invested in professional learning time, built into the school day in addition to individual teacher preparatory time with expectations for collaboration all the time. Trying to help teachers work smart across grade levels so they can be more effective in instructional approach, sharing strategies and the like. The other part that is critical to instructional strategies, bless you, is the establishment of common assessments made by teachers where teachers say, these are the important mastery skills that we are tracking against that vision of excellence in their classes. And when we do that, teachers should then examine those common assessments, and they should collaborate on who is having the kinds of results that we would like to see across the entire, you know, grade level or subject area and talk about those instructional approaches. How I do that as a principal and a superintendent now is through instructional rounds. So I'm looking and mapping, what are the instructional practices I see? So I just gave you one example of a deep dive into a subject area. I could do that for reading. I could do it for fine arts, those types of things. They have different instructional approaches and considerations. But as a superintendent, I walk each week with my principals and my central office cabinet team, and we talk about what are the hallmarks of good lesson design? Are we seeing the scope and sequence that we expect to see executed at the same time? So for example, when I go into a school, I want to see all the third grade on that at the same time. I want to see, how are we tracking? Does it look the same? Does it look like the same planet? Does it look like the same grade level? Are we seeing strategies in one class that could be cross-pollinated by the principal to another? The principal is the strategic instructional leader and can dip into the common planning time of those teachers and ask good questions and shape instructional practice. That should be a regular loop. And then, of course, there's teacher evaluation, which also helps to grow certain instructional practices. The other piece is through professional development. So I don't know how those decisions are made right now, but my suspicion is, and my hope, is that we're looking at our student trends and we're saying, you know, who's getting good results and who isn't? And what are those teachers getting good results doing? And how do we, how do we grow that across the system? And do we need professional development in those areas? So that, that's how I currently design our professional development with our central office team. All of that speaks to instructional approach.
Thank you, Emily. So we have concluded the second part of your interview and are on now to the final third phase of the interview where, at the outset, we have 40 minutes, though I think we're moving along at a pretty good clip. So we might have a little bit more time. During this part, school committee members may ask for elaboration or clarification of previous responses or pose a question relating back to your earlier presentation of your 90-day plan. I will call on members by ward. Each member will have one follow-up question, and no member will be able to pose two questions in a row out of fairness to everyone else. Questions should be clear and concise. If a member doesn't have a question, please conserve time and say pass. Time permitting, we will have additional rounds of questions. Dr. Nolan, in this part, you may tailor your responses to, well, you've been doing very good at keeping to a very efficient response time. So I think that pace would be, will be more than, more than appropriate.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll start, we will start with Ward One, Rajiv.
Thank you. Dr. Nolan, how, how would you establish working norms and a strong relationship with the school committee as, you know, coming into the role?
So I would hope that you would entertain a retreat with me very soon in, into our process. I'd like to hear what your current operating norms are and what kind of retreat work that you've already been doing. We would need to establish all the rules of engagement, right? Norms are how are we going to treat each other around here? And what are we going to do if we're not following our norms? And, and how we'd like to, to deal with that. So first, we need to do that. I don't know if you have separate school committee goals right now, but I would want to know what those are. And we would need to have some conversations about what your expectations for interaction with me are. I tend to communicate a lot. I do weekly updates to the school committee. I try to see you a lot. I invite, I would invite you to join things with me. I don't know if that's how you do things, but that's how I do things. So I see you as a critical team member for running the school system, not the operations part, but the understanding, the community part. So we would need to develop norms that allowed you to interact with me in a way that you felt you were doing that job as the Ward One person. But that also allowed me to take care of the operations and the administration in the way that I must as a professional administrator. And no doubt, we'll have some, some really good conversations about whose job is what, because that's normal in school committee and superintendent relations. But we may need to have a few retreats to establish those, those expectations, talk about our learning and working styles. So that's how I would begin with all of you.
Thanks, Rajiv. Chris?
Thank you. I want to ask a clarification on something Paul asked you regarding equity and excellence and, and the community views, which I think it's fair to say is a, a topic of conversation in the community, to, to put it lightly. You, you made a statement to the effect of, in, in speaking of the profile, the graduate and profile, the educator, that it provides you the ability to say, sorry, that's not part of our vision. How do you, I guess, reconcile that with a sense of inclusion for members of the community who might be of a minority viewpoint on a particular issue?
You might help me if you locate it in something more specific, because I, I feel like that's, I don't think inclusion is at odds with saying this particular piece is not part of our vision for a graduate outcome. So I don't, I mean, unless you want to give me a specific flavor, and I can speak to it specifically. But, you know, schools, schools have to have a core mission. And, you know, schools are required to do a lot of things, or people hope that we do a lot of things. So we have to decide what, what is that core mission going to look like? And so let me give you an example. So if, if you don't feel that part of our core mission is to provide after-school childcare services for students, like, then that would be something we couldn't, we couldn't put in the vision, right? That we wouldn't be responsible for that. But I think that's part of an outcome for our profile of a graduate because we want high-quality after-school programming so students can continue to develop certain competencies. So I guess I would need to know, like, what your specific worry is that might be at odds with inclusion versus our vision for outcomes.
Hold that thought, Chris. Out of fairness, I think we'll keep going.
Okay.
Although tee up, we will definitely have that second round, so tee that up for the next one. Anping, go ahead.
Thanks. A moment ago, I asked a question how to capitalize the increasing diversified student population to, to maintain or enhance the legacy of our educational excellence. A moment ago, you mentioned that our system's core values and your personal core values pretty matched. I'd like to hear that. So my question, would you elaborate a little bit your number one personal core value? If I remember correctly, you said high standards, high support equals respect. Could you just elaborate a little bit more about how they correlate or?
Sure. So just to circle back to the math example that I just gave you, I think that's a good example of, of how you have high expectations, right? So the math expectations are the, are math expectations. We, we have to believe every student has a chance to master those skills. And then therefore, we need to give them high support, which means teachers need high support to be expert enough to help every type of learner to access what they need to access. So that's what I mean by high skill, high support. We should not assume that any teacher or student is not up to the challenge. Students do well if they can. Teachers do well if they can. No one comes to school wanting to slack, and, and they need to be given the, the tools to, to reach the excellence. So I, I don't think diversity is at odds with that. I think that that helps us to be better and stronger.
Thank you, Anping. I'll go Ward Four. Could you talk a little bit more about how data and tracking informs student achievement in your view?
So I, I don't think we want to continuously make investments without seeing how they're doing. So we agree in my district as an administrative team how we need to track the investments that we're making. And we report on And we report on those through twice yearly state of the union, state of the schools presentations that we make to ourselves, so administrators. And then we present to the community at large. We also write an annual performance report to our town meeting members, so they can see how the strategic investments they made in the prior year impacted student achievement in the subsequent year. I spend a lot of time messaging that and trying to tie those things together, because I think it's only fair for those, in, in Natick, we have town meeting members, they spend an inordinate amount of time serving their community and, and, and getting the taxpayers to support our budget at large. They want to know, how did it, how did it all turn out, right? So this town meeting, I will be showing, here's what we invested for pandemic relief funds, and here's what you got for it. And here are the outcomes that we said we would try to bring you and where we're tracking on that. I think that's really important to keep talking about that. That said, not everything can be measured with an assessment or a test result, right? So that piece about stakeholder engagement and the cross pollination into community groups, that's really important for me to continue to do, to hear about the impact as people are experiencing school. So let me give you an example from this year. I've never had more complaints about midterms than I've had this year, ever. And it's interesting, because there's a huge cry for like, how's my kid doing and tracking against what they were, what it was like before the pandemic? But don't give them tests that would quantify that in that way. Let's find different ways to do that and different structures and find alternative modes. So it's an interesting place that we're in right now. So also trying to gather different types of information about where students are now that we're in a very different place in the pandemic. So that's my community asking me to do that and asking me to find those, those answers. I'm still tracking these things and saying, you know, how are we doing from, different from the way we did before? But I'm also adding in other data sets and other qualitative measures and, and other pieces of feedback, because that does play into how the whole child and the family experience the school and success. So I look at data all the time. I mean, that's how I understand how we're doing. But it's also can be a really heady thing for families and for kids, and we need to translate that into, into stories and into actions that families can see and feel in their student experience.
Thank you. Go ahead, Emily.
So if you get the superintendeeship, you will be moving from Natick, which is a smaller district, to Newton, which is a much larger district with 23 schools. And so my question is, what do you view as the pluses and also the challenges of, of going from a smaller district to a larger district and bringing your methodology and philosophies from Natick into Newton?
Yeah, I've thought about this the most. You know, I have a long reach and time in Natick, and I also have a, a brand, if you will, of, of just being everywhere and doing, and just being very visible. And, and that's not going to be the same kind of visible in Newton. You also have a lot more staff than we have. So, I mean, for example, in the pandemic, I was the HR director, the business manager and the superintendent during two parts of that, when people went out on medical leaves and there just isn't, there isn't staff to do the kind of work and, and that you have here. I mean, your budget documents just blow away my mind with, with what you're able to do. But I am very good at systems and scaling systems across an organization. I'm also really good at listening and defining roles. And from what I understand, there's a really good central office system in place. I would need to learn that, so I'm not doubling up work. I would need to know, though, what the deliverables for the superintendent were day to day. I, I would need to understand what they have been and how I would fit into that and how I might need to revise them. So this is something I'm really anxious to, to think about. I was meeting with the superintendent's assistant this, this evening over dinner, just to kind of get a beat of how does that all work? How, what, what are the places where I could put myself that are a strategic advantage? I also don't see a lot of the technological communication that I think this district could benefit from, which would extend my reach as a superintendent and allow us to have a voice with more families. So I would welcome that, and I, I think that's some value that I can add. I'm tenacious and I love being in schools and I want to celebrate the activity of the Newton Public Schools. So I think you would see me in a lot of places and I can't wait to watch.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Emily. Go ahead, Paul.
Thanks. I even unmuted this time. Thank you. Emily has turned me. The, Dr. Nolan, I, I've been impressed with what you've done in Natick with regard to quantifying certain aspects of the system objectives and portrait of the graduate and the like. We haven't gone so far in that regard here in Newton. And in fact, there's been a somewhat persistent reluctance on the part of senior administrators to quantify many of the educational outcomes that, that the community might be interested in hearing about. How would you be persuasive with those senior administrators to see the light in this regard?
I don't read them as reluctant to share. I, I don't know what your backstories are there, but there's a reluctance, because we don't want to be defined by one metric that, that non-professional administrators choose, especially when we're weathering right now, a pandemic recovery system that no one has the playbook for. So, you know, I think parents need to know how students are tracking on their reading assessments. They need to know, can their students read and write and be comfortable in those areas? But to define a school system on any one metric or any outcome on one metric is dangerous to do. So I, I guess I would read in that question, Mr. Levy, that maybe there's not been enough conversation about what would make sense to track? Or not enough safety to feel like we could put those things out there and that you would be our partners in, in, in understanding what it meant and what that meant for the system? I don't know that. No one said that to me. But that's from my experience. People are reluctant to put their data out, because they think they're going to get hung for it, instead of using it as the springboard for improvement. That's, teachers say that, administrators say that, even I felt that in my own evaluation, that if the only metric you have, say, in my human resources, part of my evaluation, which is a part of it, this coming up very shortly, is how many staff of color I have hired, that's tough. That's tough for that to be the only measure of my human resources capacity as a leader. And so if you use that example and you translate it to, you know, student assessment, I, I think that's what worries people, is that the portfolio is so shallow, or, you know, someone else has picked, picked the measure. That would be my guess. But I think it's worth having a conversation. And obviously, as the governance team, you're going to want us to have it. So I would have it.
Thank you, Paul. Go ahead, Kathy.
So Dr. Nolan, I, I want to go back to something you said a few minutes ago about aspects of student experience that aren't so easily quantifiable. And what comes to mind immediately for me is our students' social and emotional wellbeing and mental health. And we hear a lot from our educators that even this school year, they're dealing with increased mental health challenges. So how do you take that into account when assessing overall student performance? And are there ways to measure our ability as a school system to meet our students' sort of whole person needs and mental health needs, as opposed to purely their academic performance?
Yeah, I think this is a place that before the pandemic, I was not, I was not as deeply plugged in to how to track this for students. But we have implemented new curriculum for our students in social emotional learning that have pre and post-assessments K to eight that tell us certain things about their own self-concept and how they're tracking against norms for students their age. We've long done culture surveys that track student connectedness and belonging and their own self-assessment of, of their, their status in terms of social emotional. I haven't found those to be as effective. So we use Panorama Survey, I think you do too in some areas, but I haven't, I haven't loved those in, due to their depth, their lack of depth. Since the pandemic, though, we didn't want to leave anything to chance. And I should say, even before the pandemic, we have a screening for all seventh, ninth and 11th graders called Hey Natick High School, How Are You? And Hey Wilson Middle School, How Are You? And Hey Kennedy, How Are You? And what this is, is Tracy Gladstone out of Wellesley College and Newton Wellesley Hospital has created a, a phone screening and a, a deep amount of research that says that talking to this stranger on the phone with this protocol allows students who are previously undetected with severe emotional distress to come forward and be matched with, with practitioners. We've been really happy with that program and that has really allowed us to smoke out, if you will, the students who were hidden to us before. We've had that longstanding in the system before I was superintendent, but we've added more grades to it in the pandemic to track on student needs. This year, we've actually added the equivalent of benchmark assessments for social emotional learning, though. We actually stole one of your employees, Dr. Art Ferguson, who, I'm sorry, but not And he's been tremendous. His expertise is exactly just in time, what we needed, to put in the portfolio, the screeners and the deep assessments that allow us to see if students, different from curricular knowledge, but their own personal skill set, where they are. And then we had been piloting something called the DESA Assessment, which is a, a strengths assessment, the DEVERO Strengths Assessment, which then takes students who are red flagged and says, okay, so what's the deep dive into this? And then lastly, I should say, just as, as a matter of course, this year, each of our buildings have done two days of relationship mapping with students, trying to detect those students who might be isolated or not connected to any adults in the building. And those were tremendously powerful sessions in all of our schools. And I didn't have to mandate with a capital M. Everyone was like, oh yeah, we, we should do this. And we actually, one of our school committee members works for EDC and he's an expert in SEL. And, you know, so it's just an example of how the governance team can be aligned with us and, and help us to make good moves to track kids in social emotional learning. I do want to say that your high school students are really worried about this. They brought, that was the thing they brought to me today, is that they are saying that they are stressed out about the level of pressure on them to simply take AP courses and not necessarily courses that they love, but the things that look good for college transcripts and to look successful. Instead, they, they want to be given the chance and the agency to try things that are in their passion area, which will, which will make them feel better about school and their words, not be constantly in a cycle of burnout. So I thought that was brave of them to share today, but I thought I'd reflect that back to you. I think it's important for you to know that, that, that in this equity versus excellence debate, there's children in there and what they're hearing is, I've got to do more and be more, and I feel burnt out at times. Now that said, you know, that's, we got to tackle that, right? And we want children to have the futures that they choose.
Thanks, Kathy. Go ahead, Coe. Also, a reminder for members to please pull down and speak into your, your microphone. Coe was just kind enough to demonstrate that.
Now that you mentioned that last thing, I almost wanted to change my question, but I'm going to stick with my question that I was going to ask. But I wanted to, throughout your writing, your letters and your resume and everything, you talk a lot about personalized learning, which I'm very intrigued about, and I think it can mean many different things. And so I was wondering if you could talk, talk a little bit about how you see personalized learning and maybe, if possible, give examples from different levels of schooling, because I think it can look different at, at elementary versus a high school or something like that.
It does, although there's a lot of commonalities. So first, it starts with a central office providing high-quality curriculum materials and not just one. There is no one unicorn of a curriculum that's going to solve anything. So there's a good, strong horse and you put a bunch of saddlebags on it and you ride. So sorry for the metaphor, but that's how it is. So what you do is hire great teachers and you say as a central office, here are all the resources and we're going to train you as much as we can. Then it becomes actually listening to the learner and, and following the learner. What kind of learning inventories do you have? How do you assess students so you know something about them in particular? They should be known by, yes, their name, but strengths and needs. They should be able to be known for, you know, aspects of their family, their, their culture hit, cultural heritage, their, their linguistic backgrounds. Those connections should be made so that, that, that yummy belonging feeling is there for them, so they'll open up to their teachers. There should be goal-setting practices. You can do this with a kindergartner, you can do this with a 12th grader. That would allow students to take control of their learning, which reduces anxiety and hits some of those SEL expectations. So school's not something we do to kids, we do it with kids. And they need to be invited into, into that process. So then from there, with the goal-setting and the assessments that you do, it might look like leveled texts on a same, on the same topic. It might look like interest centers. I saw today in your elementary classrooms, different centers with students doing different tasks all along the same continuum. I saw students getting their phonemic awareness training and phonological, you know, gym, if you will, over here, while more adept readers were being given the chance to take more in-depth comprehension tests and the like. Those are the types of activities that any class could have. With the artificial intelligence tools that are at our disposal, I would have killed for these as a teacher. You can level any text across a theme and you can scaffold students until they can get to the reading level that you desire them to get at. So things are, are different now in terms of how quickly we can personalize learning. And that is exactly how I use, would advise using technology in the classroom. It's not all technology all the time. It's how can we ease the teacher's burden so that she can be present to facilitate the learning and we can automate some of the pieces that used to take a lot of time? I spent most of my young teaching life correcting papers that could be automated now, not the writing papers, but like grammar quizzes or vocabulary or assessments that assess reading levels. And seeking out the books and creating the groups and those things we can do now. Our Renaissance Learning Benchmark, group students by instructional need. I get that three times a year out of, and I know you have a similar dashboard with iReady. So those instructional groupings are a good base to go to the teacher meetings where then you can drill down even further to find out what are the discrete needs. As a parent, I hope you would come into parent conferences or showcases and be able to see that trajectory. In my, in my child's own school in Westboro, she, at elementary school, would show me her goals and then I would see the work output that would be there that were different. She was, she was not always on grade level, but I could see where she was related to the rest of the class. I think those types of invitations for families build confidence and, you know, you're one of the key partners in terms of learning. So if you're seeing something in the showcase or the goal-setting that concerns you, you interact with the teacher and then there's a, a greater web of support around the child. So, and that's just sort of how I think about personalizing learning. I saw many hallmarks of it in, in the visits today.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mayor Fuller.
This is Kathy Shields' questions, but for, about our teachers. What are you seeing with our teachers in this, in early 2023? What do they need? What do they, what's the role of the superintendent with them?
So teachers in general, in the world. So it's a tough time for our profession. We've had a lot of churn in many places. You haven't. So the answers are probably in your district. Why, why haven't Newton Public Schools teachers left when many other districts have been rocked by that? So I've been conducting stay interviews with my staff, which I would recommend to any, any school administrator. I always said, hey, if you want to have an exit interview, let me know. No one would ever come. I said, would you like to have a stay interview a few weeks ago? And hundreds of people are coming in, like, this is why I stay. So really interesting. I, I think we ought to explore that. I think Newton may have some answers here that, I mean, my guess is that teachers right now, if, if our performance and feelings in Natick last year were any indication, last year was the hardest of my career ever. We all thought it was going to be a much easier year. We were back in full live school and it was just really hard and grueling and they're tired. And a lot of the collaborative procedures that we had in place to break teacher isolation had been broken in COVID and they needed to be pieced back together. And it wasn't just simple enough to say, let's all get back in the room and do the work like, like we never left. So I think there's some time that they need. I think that, that there needs to be the expectation of a little bit of a slower pace than we moved at before, because they too are healing from some trauma and some, some difficulty, some disappointments in, in where they are. I think they continue to need good professional development as they, as they always did and probably time, time to get back into the collaborative structures, retraining. This year, our theme in Natick for the opening of school was, hey, I'm new here, even though most of us weren't, because it felt that way. Things that we had always done, people were forgetting to do. And, and so I think there needs to be some real kindness and care around supporting teachers. Things that we had always done, people were forgetting to do. And, and so I think there needs to be some real kindness and care around supporting teachers through this, this time period. Teachers want to be held to high standards. They, they are excellent. They want to be excellent always. I don't know any teacher who comes in and says, like, I'm phoning it in. So, so I think we need to be really careful not to burn them out while they're doing this massive recovery effort with our students. And sometimes that's simply being there for students in a, in a more emotional way. We've had a lot more behavior challenges than ever in the schools in the last two years. That, that takes time and energy and needs to be dealt with. And it's not the secondary curriculum because you can't get to the curriculum if you're not addressing those, those issues. So you do them simultaneously, but the teachers bear that double burden.
Thanks, Mayor Fuller. Um, I think we can buzz around, uh, probably a quick second round. Rajeev, we'll go back to you.
Thank you. Oh, one of the, you know, continuing the theme of challenges, I guess. We, we have a large population of special education students. In, in your experience over the last couple of years, what, what have you seen as the major challenges facing special education in your district and how have you worked to address it?
So we were fortunate in the pandemic that we had our special education students in learning centers all the time. We never went virtual, a hundred percent virtual for those students. So many districts have pandemic recovery service issues to address. We have just seen an immense uptick in the requests for evaluation, even in students that may not look like what we previously would have referred for evaluation. Parents are very nervous. If they're not seeing the kind of tracking on performance for their students' progress that they want to see, they're saying, well, I'm going to do this just to, just to be sure. So that's a huge strain on special education because it takes your testing teachers and your psychologists out of the classroom, at least it does for us in Natick. I don't know if you have enough staff where you have testers and you have teachers. So what that does is it pulls those staff out to do testing when they could be with children. So that's been a huge burden for us. Obviously the reading science debate is out there and that has not necessarily been a huge issue in Natick, but it's a concern we've had to address. And like I said before, there is no unicorn that is reading instruction. It's many different things and you need many different component parts for reading instruction. But that's certainly a concern. We want to, we want to respond to that concern. But that's, that's a lot of districts are being distracted by that discussion. And, and not necessarily seeing the, the special education rates to go with it. So I think you just want to address that out front, how you are teaching readings so that it doesn't become a special education push. So I also think you have some really robust programs in-house that are sub, sub separate programs, which means children don't have to be outplaced. Like you spend a significant amount of time and energy and money on doing that. So you don't have to spend it elsewhere. So you're probably very happy that you're not hitting, getting hit in the same way as other districts by the out of district placement change in tuition. For us, it's literally a whole percent of our budget that, because we outplay students. So I think that's a great investment that you've made. That may be something you, you want to look at in the future to see if that's still how you want to do those services. I, I think most families would want, would want you to keep doing that. And I saw some tremendous programming today in, in some of your programs that span the K-12 continuum. So, and I saw really nice alignment. That's often an issue. Just the, the practices and the expectation for those programs, K to 12. I could see that today, just what I saw today, like to see more, but. So I think those are the, the problems that we're all, we're all facing right now.
Thanks, Rajeev. Um, go ahead, Chris, and remember to, there you go.
When you were speaking about professional development, you were describing what sounded like a sort of very bottoms up outcome oriented process of who is getting results and who isn't. That was sort of the, that, close to the phrase you used. How do you think about in, in professional development balancing that approach versus a more top-down approach? Or one that may be, and I'll tie this into my original question, one that may be more driven by ideals other than versus outcomes?
Can you give an example of what that might be?
So, I mean, I think you could probably broadly characterize that as any of those things that aren't quantifiably measurable. So, you know, I would say there are those, some of those things, you know, we, we invest a huge amount of our time, I know, in, you know, some of our DEI efforts, which aren't going to produce a, you know, a measurable outcome per se, you know? How do, how do you think about balancing those two issues?
Um, well, I, I would say that, to say that your DEI strategies don't have measurable outcomes, I think, I think you want to address achievement problems and mindset issues by addressing DEI training. I think that's what you're saying, that you, that those aren't measurable outcomes.
Well, I think it depends who you talk to.
So I, I mean, I, I think we'd have to be more specific because this is one of those theoretical questions that since I don't know which problem I'm solving, I don't know what solution to tell you. What I do know is if you want to address achievement gaps, mindsets are an issue. And there are certain strategies that, you know, I can't measure how your brain shifts in terms of its assessment of students, but I can look at how many students have access to high level courses. And there are practices that you can take within the schools to ensure that students have access to everything. Then you have to do what we, I told Mr. Shen, which is high expectations, high support. Those are DEI strategies, but they need training. So I guess I would say it depends which strategies we're talking about. I think we want to track on every investment that we make. I would also say to you that every teacher I talked to today talked about equitable mindsets and access for all their students to all the goodness that is Newton Public Schools. So I don't know that I'm hearing about a top-down initiative on DEI. I'm hearing a ground-up. Teachers say, these are inequities. Our job is to get rid of inequities. Let's teach the heck out of it and let's, let's get over those inequities. So that's our job. All of us is to give them the tools and the training that they need to do that. Now we're speaking really theoretically, so I don't know what training exactly you've had. But I'm guessing that it's designed to address those very achievement gaps that we're worried about.
Thanks, Chris. Go ahead, Unting. And a reminder to be clear and as clear and concise with your question as possible to assist Dr. Nolan and, and be able to formulate a response.
Well, I hope my question a little bit clearer, but we understand that a lot of issues, education is not a field we can quantify. But I do want to follow up, um, you know, Rajeev and Chris mentioned the students with challenges. That's called the high risk group of students. Department also use that term. I was impressed by the Natick district, you know, as you mentioned quite a few times to flag out those, those, uh, high-risk students. So just explain it a bit more, how successful have you been past few years, especially since you became superintendent? And to flag out those students say middle school, and if you look at the data and there could be socially, emotionally, academically challenged for many reasons. How have you been successful in that regard? Thank you.
I'll use fifth grade as an example because I, we just finished our winter benchmarking. So two, two things I wanted to examine in winter. One, you know, I need to address some discussion at the school committee level about reading, right? So how's our reading program going? So I looked at grade one, 89% proficient at or above grade level by January of this year, right? So I feel like a lot's going well. So then the question was, okay, for this, for the 23% that weren't, bring me their profile. What's happening? Do we already know what's happening for them? Are they already on a plan? If they're not, are they newcomers to the country? So all, that's where we are with that. So, so I know where we're tracking against end of year expectations always. Second, I look at grade five. Now, grade five had a huge part of their upper elementary in the pandemic. So I'm, I'm using them right now and tracking them. So I just gave the school committee this, this week, the three-year look at, you know, where were they at the end of 2021? Where were they at the end of 21, 22? And where are they by January of this year? And both in math and ELA, they are at or better where they were in 2019, 20. So I'm tracking very carefully. Are we, are we getting back to where we were? So I think we're about three months from, from go time. So I'm tracking that. Now, not every child will make, will make it, right? But I'll at least have had every principal going through that data and saying, why not? And, and talking to parents about why not? So if a student's put on a support plan that of any type, and even in the general education, so fifth grade, let's say they're not on an IP and they're not on a 504. They might be on a goal attainment plan, we call them, gap plans. And those are, they're intervention blocks built into our day and you have them too in your middle schools. Where students get what they need and they also get enrichment and extension. Because no one needs intervention all the time on everything. They also have to be inspired and enriched and learn other modalities. So those students would receive intervention and it would be continuing intervention. And we look at that in every six weeks in our data meetings at, led by lit specialists and math specialists within every elementary building and every middle school building. So that's how I track on it to make sure that students are making that progress. So I, I haven't 100% closed every achievement gap. I definitely have not, but that's how we're track on it. We're getting better at the SEL piece of that. We, we had to pilot a few different assessments to find out the ones that we felt gave us actual, the right information, just as we weeded through other math and ELA assessment systems that didn't, didn't really give us actionable data.
Thank you, Unting. Um, I would like to hear a little bit more about your relationship with your union and how you approach collective bargaining.
So, um, so I've been negotiating even when I was a, a principal in this district and an assistant principal, I just, I wanted to do it. I told, I told the other venues this year that I became a principal because I had a terrible one. And I just was so frustrated by what was happening to my colleagues and me that I just said, well, I'm going to learn how to do that. And one of the issues was that we were constantly deadlocked in, in collective bargaining. It was so contentious. We had, uh, union teachers would go to new teachers and say, you know, keep your head down for three years and don't talk. And I wrote a grant in the nineties for computers. And I remember the union leader saying to me, this computer thing's a fad, like, don't start doing this. Everybody's going to be expected to do this. And it just, I was just enraged by it. So I wanted to get into bargaining for that reason. I wanted to have a hand in that. But what I've learned is that the union are troubled by the same things we're troubled by. And we've built collaborative relationships over a long period of time. Nine years ago, we sat together and made a heat map of different communities that, and their salaries and their, all the, the pieces of their contracts that we wanted for our teachers and our district. And we were in the bottom quartile of salaries in Metro West. And that wasn't who we wanted to be as a, as a school system. And we wanted to attract a higher caliber of teachers. So we made a plan over three contracts to get to the 75th quartile and those heat maps. And we've done that in this contract and I'm really proud of that. But we do that through collaborative bargaining. We, we don't do positional bargaining and under the prior superintendent, we did do positional bargaining and you lose so much when you don't have those collaborative conversations with the teachers' union, finding out why the asks are where they are. What are the values of that organization? Now I know we're in a little bit of a different time. The Mass Teachers Association has taken a greater role in local bargaining and I'm fortunate that our union listens, but then executes their vision according to their community and we have a very close relationship. But that's because of a lot of listening and FaceTime. And that's, that's first and foremost, you'll see in my 90-day entry plan, the first person listed is the union leadership group. So I, I would need to meet with them right away so that we could understand what the, what the pressures are and what was, what was cooking for them. We also need a working relationship just for the day-to-day execution of the contract. We don't want to be dealing with grievances all the time. What are the patterns? What are they concerned about? What are the, what are their perceived inequities so that we can get out in front of that? And to that end, I have a superintendent's advisory meeting once a month with representatives from every union and every building that bring problems in, just directly to me and a union leadership meeting, which is the president, vice president, the officers, where we try to solve problems. We usually do this on the last Friday of the month and, and we just try to solve problems before they get to the grievance level.
Thank you. Go ahead, Emily.
So I keep going back to, um, your discussion of the, the decision that had to be made to close an elementary school because of declining enrollment. And we, we have some schools that have declining enrollment and one of them may be at 120 students in five years if, if the estimates, you know, track the way that we think that they might go. And it's been weighing heavily on my mind and I've been thinking about your experience and I'm wondering if you could share the community engagement piece. I mean, I know it's, it's a different situation because this, this is not, wasn't something that we're holding, that was being held over us as a scare tactic for, for budgetary reasons. But how, how did you deal with that with the community? Did you have a special internal task force or group or how, how did that work?
Yeah.
It was very specific and very weak.
Yeah, no, I, I would definitely, um, I would definitely make some revisions to how I approach this, knowing what I know now. What, what we did do was we created a long-range planning and enrollment committee. We were looking at facilities. We were looking at all the available documents, like we had a real estate person on it, the town manager, town administrator was with me, the facilities director, representatives from every school council, just so that everybody was on the same page, the preschool representatives, our Metco director. Just, just understanding all of, all of the push and pull of the use of space. Because I also wanted those community members to then be ambassadors to explain the decisions later. This is the part that I felt wasn't as linear as I, as I would have liked it to go. Here's what I would do now. Here's what I would do now. I would create with you as the governance team, what is the rubric by which we are going to make decisions about schools and enrollment? And, and we're going to do that before the heat of the battle. We're going to do that, like, should we come in the future to a place where we don't have the enrollment? What would closure conditions need to be? We didn't do that. What we did instead was, um, school committee members gave me a list of like 9,000 questions and I went on a research journey and I compiled a report for them. And the report was long and it answered all their questions. But in some ways, all that information, just like, you know, in the community, people will take whatever information they want and turn it to whatever side they want it to be on. So I felt I was giving a very, like plain spoken analysis of, here's the real estate rates. Here's our birth rates. Here's the, a number of available classrooms. You know, it just, it was, I, it was understated how emotional it was to read any of it by the community. So if we had a rubric for how we were going to make decisions on this, we would have been sharper. We would have been less, less thrown around by interpretations of the news items that the school committee asked for. Everyone was a good player in, in the process. I mean, you know, your neighborhood school, like you move there for your neighborhood school, you know, you, all of those pieces, it's emotional. So I think we could, we should do some thinking before we even undertake any of these conversations about what it would, what it would mean to close a school and what would make you want to do it.
Thanks, Emily. Go ahead, Paul.
Thanks. Dr. Noel, I'm afraid the answer you gave to my last question created a straw man that I didn't mean to imply in the question, that we as a committee would decide on single quantitative metrics that would be used as a gotcha if they were not, if they were not met. What, what I was considering was the kind of metrics you've adopted in Natick, which were established based on your recommendations to the school committee, based on your best professional judgment and provided some level of quantitative analysis of progress along broad objectives. And my question remains, how would you be persuasive with the senior administrators in Newton Public Schools and in the, with the principals, that such metrics would be an important part of the administration and governance of the that such metrics would be an important part of the uh, administration and governance of the system?
I don't think you made a straw man. I, I think what you asked me is why do you think there's, or you implied that there's resistance on the part of the central office for adopting that? And I theorize that they're probably worried about X. They're probably worried that they're going to be um, hung to one particular uh, metric. I don't know that, I'm, I'm speaking theoretically. I, I would of course recommend to my team what I thought was best and I would need to hear um, their opinions on that. I would also recommend to you things and I would need to hear your opinions back on that. I just don't know what those specific items are right now. But I, I think I've been very clear that I think families in the community should be able to track how their students are doing and have confidence in us. I haven't heard reluctance from the staff to celebrate what they're doing and to share how they're doing. But I, I haven't been in all the conversations that you've been in. I think once I know uh, more, I can tell you more. But I would be recommending that we're very front and center about the achievements and the, the problems that we're facing in terms of our students' achievement.
Thank you, Paul. Go ahead, Kathy.
Dr. Nolan, I wanted to go back to the entry plan that you described for us and, and ask you a little bit more detail about one aspect that I, I found particularly interesting. So you talked about ways to engage members of the community that may not sort of affirmatively come out when we send the survey or speak up loudly in meetings. What kind of strategies do you use to reach out to the, we'll just call them the, the silent folks?
So um, one way that we've done this in, in Natick is um, back when I was a principal, I'll use the, the bullying um, time period where the bullying legislation came out. There were some really loud voices that came out of that, that piece of time. A lot of screaming loud voices. And um, as an administrative team, we were barely holding on to getting the new legislation deployed, writing the new policy and trying to train everyone on how to be responsive to these bullying requirements. In that time period, um, I had to discipline a, a bunch of sixth graders um, for bullying that they were doing online. It was the exact case that sort of brought us this legislation was happening in my middle school at the time. And um, I was disciplining those students. And of course, my least favorite conversation happened where mom X comes to me and says, so I'm an attorney and you just disciplined my kid and um, but instead of, you know, getting down my throat about it, she said, why don't we talk about all the challenges? And from that time period sprung an organization in Natick called Spark Kindness. And it used to be called the Natick Parents Against Bullying and Cyberbullying. And um, what we began to do there was to use our parent community to reach out as an ombudsman to families who had felt disenfranchised within the Natick Public Schools and billing themselves as such. And so we would inform them of our procedures and make them experts on how we just, we did our procedures. And then they would find these folks for us and bring them to us and we would have moderated discussions. And that organization, you can read about it now. They provide a parent engagement resilience series, parent trainings. I mean, they are our right hand in terms of canvassing the community for those unheard voices. And they get awesome participation in their activities, more than we can get, hundreds and hundreds, because they, it's their sole mission is to engage the families. I would suggest to you that a district of this size needs a family engagement center and that that engagement center um, could have townwide implications, not just for the school. But um, they're out there talking about our organization, town, talking about the city of Newton, talking about its resources, making citizens' lives plain to them and the resources plain to them. But also eliciting voices that may not um, want to drop into the school committee meeting, but might drop into a center because at the same time you're providing a preschool playgroup where the mom can meet other moms and get some, um, get some traction in the Newton schools and get their, their feet wet. Other community engagement centers sometimes provide health services. They provide um, adult education. I think that that's something that you might want to consider. And maybe there are organizations already that there's, there's overlapping work and they want to partner with us in that. So for example, in our town, the YMCA runs a, a playgroup called Project ABC. And we have been discussing moving all that together so that the work they do in reaching out to daycares uh, and private um, home care for students, that they get us connected early with those students. So we can start to initiate families and kids into the way we do business in the schools very early. I would suggest that that's a great way through your little people to, to get people in before they're even in school. Um, so those are the types of, of scenarios that I would look to.
Thanks, Kathy. Go ahead, Coach.
Yeah, I had um, a question about, and you talked a lot about outcomes and goals. And I was just wondering how you see the holistic process, I guess, of developing a district improvement plan? How that relates to school improvement plans, how that relates to teacher goals, et cetera?
So this is.
High level.
Yeah, sure. This is the process I use right now. So we have our, we had a strategic planning process which came out of the hiring process for the superintendent. And then for a solid year after that, I did listening sessions with my school committee members. So one committee member always with me while we mapped certain themes in the community. Um, and that created our, our current strategic plan, um, which was due for a refresh this year. But due to COVID, we decided to kick it out a little longer because we just felt we hadn't deepened the work enough. So from that, um, uh, you know, we, we had our sort of first year of implementing what we said we were going to do in the action steps. And then we had our end of the year state of the union and state of the schools with the administrators. So I compiled all of that information and used it to design the summer retreat for our administrators. And we invite our school committee members to join us for a brainstorming session for, here's the data that we found. Here's, here's how we're going to approach it and receiving feedback from you. We do that, we do that in, in July and August. So that by September, you are approving the school improvement plans that were based on this refresh that we all had a chance to discuss in the summer. And then the principals from there, by October, have the expectation to meet with every teacher and align their student learning goals and their professional practice goals with the, the school improvement plan. Now, that's not to say that teachers can't, they should have their own professional practice goals at times. But a lot of times, teachers will work smart and collaboratively set professional learning goals. So they'll go to a particular type of professional development together. And it all has to be aligned to the district and, and the school goal. So that's how we do it. And then we're tracking all along on, so how are the teachers doing on their goals? How are the principals doing on their goals? And I generally set my goals to be aligned with the principals. So that our fates are tied. So when they're getting good results, I'm getting good results. For example, our, my student learning goal this year is on um, tracking and exiting students from gap plans. What's that look like? How do we know? So the, the very, um, the very questions that Mr. Shen asked about, how do you really know how students are doing?
Thank you. Thanks, Coach. Go ahead, Mayor Fuller.
So you're in hour thirteen. So you can take a pass. Is there anything that we haven't asked that you just wish somebody had asked you? And you can say, I take a pass.
I wish you'd asked me about my relationships with principals more.
Go for it.
Okay. So again, I'm tracking this with, with Emily's question about where I am in a larger system. So I just, um, the principals are key to how schools operate. They are the instructional leaders. Uh, they need to be aligned. They need to be excited. They need to be respected. They are our boots on the ground. So I'll be figuring that out about how that looks in this district, but it's critically important. That is an incredible job. It's where they hold hands with the families, with the kids, with the central office. So, so they're really important to what we do and um, they should be cherished. And what that means is um, cared about, but also trained, highly trained and supported. So I don't know what that looks like here, but um, but that's my orientation to that. They deserve high quality professional development. They need to be asked often what they need. And um, they need to be empowered so their voice um, defines the culture for their school under the district values.
Thank you, Mayor Fuller. That is a very lovely segue into our final section here, which is an opportunity for you, Dr. Nolan, to ask any questions that you have of our committee.
So um, I was, I became superintendent actually six years ago, um, under unexpected circumstances. And so I know what it's like to weather the change from one superintendent to another. What are you hoping are the hallmarks of superintendent school committee collaboration in this next phase of the Newton schools?
Hmm. It's a very good question. I think we will do a quick, please, uh, a quick round where one or two words, what do you think are the hallmarks of, of this new chapter of relationship with the school committee and the superintendent? Did I paraphrase that? Okay, go ahead, Rajiv.
The, the, um, the couple of things I've, I strongly hope for, um, one would be collaboration in, in terms of achieving our goals around educational excellence, equity, running a tight ship. We're, we're a large district, but we still face budget pressures and, and competing challenges and interests. That would be one big aspect. The other would be communication. We, I think, perhaps like many other districts, had some real damage done to relationships across our, our stakeholders, our parents, our teachers, administrators, the school committee. And we're digging out of that, but I think strong communication with the school committee, with the community at, at large would be very important.
All right, perhaps I should have modeled what I meant by one or two words. I will, sorry.
One or two words?
I, I.
But I think Rajiv, Rajiv answered for me, so I don't need to say anything. I think Rajiv said most of the things.
You gave many words, which I think aligns with, with most of our, the responses that we'll have. But um, I will say for me, it's repairing relationships across the board. Top down, bottom up, sideways, every way you can put it. Uh, there's a lot of repair that needs to happen in terms of our, our parents, our, our school committee, our superintendents, um, and how we all engage and relate to each other. Go ahead, Chris.
Sure. So i- in a word, I think it's transparency and it's for the same reasons of rebuilding the trust in this institution that's been lost. And I think it's only through um, you know, a, a far greater level of transparency and honesty and speaking frankly with our constituents that we're going to get there.
Go ahead, Aunt Ping, very quickly.
I'll borrow your words. High standards, high support equals to achievement and respect.
That's brilliant.
You made me add a word. Collaboration, communication and humor.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Just. So I think my colleagues have summed it up. I mean, I, I don't have words to add to these words. I think that collectively this does it for me.
Uh, Paul, I'm, I apologize. Go ahead, Paul.
That's okay. As usual, I have a slightly different take, which is, I believe that many of the activities of the school committee over the last several years have been performative and not effective governance. And my hope would, you, would be that you help us become a more effective governing body.
Thanks, Paul. Go ahead, Coach.
I, I agree that, I mean, I, I liked Rajiv's original uh, definition. And I think, you know, the communication is key. I think, you know, having retreats, which is something, you know, that we have done this year has been very helpful and everyone being on the same page.
And Mayor Fuller.
Dito on what everybody else has said, but I'll add one more. We're learning to, we need to depend on you for leadership and educational knowledge. So all those other things, but in addition.
Great.
Feel free to ask another question. We have uh, we've asked you many, many. If you have more, we are uh, more than prepared to respond. If not, you can also say pass.
Well, I guess I would ask you, um, since I understand that you are the primary negotiators with the teachers' union without a superintendent until this year, what is your uh, collaborative style in dealing with the teachers' union? Because that is a critical piece of the healing that I think you're talking about. So, so how, how are you approaching this time period right now with the teachers' union?
So I think I'll turn to my colleague Kathy Shields, who is the senior most uh, member of our collective bargaining team for our largest union. Kathy, how would you respond?
So I think what I would say is that our goal, so we, we've tried to make very clear in our negotiations so far with the union that we have certain goals in, in focusing on ways to improve our relationships that are, are student centered and focused on improving outcomes for students. Um, in terms of an approach, I, I take a, a very um, collaborative and respectful approach. I think we try to the extent we can to answer all of the union's requests for information, to explain why we've made various proposals, why we've responded to various of their proposals in the way we have. And I think right at, at the moment, we are, while we are negotiating in good faith about a lot of different topics, but we are facing a lot of budgetary uncertainties. So as we go into our budget season, one of the things we've had to talk about are the, the budgetary challenges we're facing and how that impacts um, what we're able to, to, to put on the table for negotiations. And we, I, I think everyone knows, and because we've presented in the school committee, that we're looking at budget scenarios if the override passes, if the override doesn't pass. And we've started to strategize with the superintendent and her team about what those two budget scenarios look like. And so that's something we've discussed with um, the union as well.
So thank you, Kathy. I think with that, we will draw to a close uh, and say, Dr. Nolan, on behalf of the school committee, thank you once again for your interest in becoming Newton's next superintendent. On behalf of our faculty and our staff, our parents, our guardians, our students, our residents, thank you very much, so much for spending an entire very generous day uh, with us here in Newton. We deeply appreciate it. And thank you so much to our staff who assisted in the intricate orchestration of this day. You've done a, an amazing job and we recognize that. Thanks to everyone who attended tonight's meeting. Uh, we will um, we will have one more finalist interview tomorrow night, followed by a deliberation day on Friday. Dr. Nolan, our consultants will be in touch with you after that. We appreciate once again you being here. Please have some rest, you've earned it.
Our meeting is. I just have to say one thing. This has been a tremendously exciting day and I feel so um, uplifted and excited by what I've seen. And it would be my honor to be your first female permanent superintendent. So I really look forward to that Friday phone call.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our meeting is adjourned, everyone. Thank you.